Welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District Board of Ed meeting on today is it, May fourteenth? The twenty twenty, all the days are running into each other, never leaving the home, working from home. But, okay, can we all please stand for the pledge allegiance? I ask everyone to mute their mics where there's only one person speaking. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Upcoming events? There will be a special board event meeting, virtual meeting at five thirty on May nineteenth. Is that something we were talking about changing the start time?
No, the start time is five thirty.
Paying at five thirty, okay. And then on May twenty first will be another special board event meeting. That was virtual, starting at seven P M, that's where the budget approval will be. On Thursday, May twenty eighth, we'll have our public hearing on the budget that starts at six thirty, followed by the regular board of ed meeting at seven o'clock P M.
Jeff, we also have a district leadership team on May twenty seventh at one o'clock.
Yeah, forgot about that. Okay. And there is no agenda modification, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Don't move Doug.
Second Carl.
Who is, who motioned? Second Carl. Motion by Doug, second by Carl, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, is there any abstention? Hearing none, is there any no vote? Hearing none, all those in favor say hi.
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 We have an unanimous approval to adopt the agenda and we'll move on to pride. So is there anything you have for us, Rachel?
Yeah, so I guess this is just a quick little update, obviously since the last one. Um, so we found out the day after the last meeting that school was going to be closed for the rest of the academic school year. And a lot of, a lot of students were upset but not surprised. When we kind of, kind of knew it was coming, we were a little prepared, it's just sad to see it be official, you know? Um, but a few weeks, a few weeks ago, the senior class advise, or the senior class officials met with our advisors and we wanted to discuss some things that we can do in case we couldn't have a graduation at the school, which has now been confirmed. And they suggested that we somehow maybe do the drive in. And then today, it was great to see Mr. Porter confirm that we have secured the drive in for a virtual graduation, um, which is a great second choice and, you know, if we can't be at the school, at least we can all be together somehow or, or work something out with that. Um, and he also mentioned in the email that, uh, there's going to be another sort of virtual graduation broadcasted on A B C, CBS, NBC, and Fox on Saturday, May sixteenth, so it's coming right up. Um, and that's gonna give each of the students a little acknowledgement and also pay tribute to the families and the teachers, so that's really great. And the senior class would really like to thank everyone who donated money and donated a sign for each of us to have in our front, in our front yards. It was really like a great surprise for all of us to come out and see and a, a little reminder and motivation to kind of stay strong and like be great through all this that's going on. So we just want to say thank you for everyone that helped out with that.
Thank you, thank you, Rachel, is there anyone else with pride?
Uh, yeah, I would just like to say, uh, as superintendent of schools, I am still um, so thankful and so proud of our district and how, um, the entire staff has really come together to keep things moving and to support families and students. So I couldn't be more proud to work in this school district. Um, I encourage everybody to visit the individual school websites because you will see, uh, some amazing videos, hopefully North Park posted theirs today. The P T A at North Park organized a video to surprise the teachers for teacher appreciation week, where a number of students, uh, just first names only sent messages to the teachers by holding up signs, it was put to music. So, um, please feel free to not only visit our district website, but the individual school websites. Um, and, uh, please, uh, stay tuned, we'll be updating our continuity of learning plan uh, and also how we will connect with kids through our digital learning, how we'll take it uh, one more step in the near future, so stay tuned.
Okay, anyone else have any pride? Hearing none, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Uh, yes, so we're, uh, we'll talk about it under the subcommittees, hopefully some of the board members who were there will, will talk about it. But, uh, we are organizing our leadership structures, uh, activating all of our leadership structures so that as we move forward with the reopening of schools, it will be a coordinated effort, I mentioned this at the last, uh, board meeting. Uh, and we are continuing to organize through the, uh, building leadership teams. Uh, they will be meeting with the P T A officers. Each school will follow the same agenda, two of them start tomorrow and, uh, will continue until, um, the final meeting of one of our leadership structures, I believe, is May twenty eighth with the district's wide safety team. So, uh, rest assured, we are activating all of the leadership structures in the district so that as we move forward with plans for reopening, it's very coordinated within our district as well as with the county. We hope to hear an update tomorrow on some of the phased opening from the governor. Tomorrow's supposed to be a big announcement, uh, on a couple of fronts. Um, hopefully we'll hear some more budget news, uh, and also, uh, from the governor on plans to, uh, phase in the reopening of schools. Uh, thank you, Rachel, for mentioning the, uh, Saturday, May sixteenth at eight P M. Uh, there'll be a national, uh, virtual graduation ceremony with lots of big names and, uh, all kinds of interesting, um, possibilities. We have posted this on our website and on Facebook. If you click on the link, there is a way for, uh, students to participate or send some suggestions and family. So, uh, it was a very short turnaround, we were just notified today of this, uh, big event, but it is this Saturday night and, um, if you want to learn more about it, we have posted it on our website and on Facebook. Our thought exchange, uh, for end of year ceremonies and graduation is still open. All parents, uh, should have received, uh, an email that explains the thought exchange. And, um, we are seeing hundreds of responses coming in. Uh, this thought exchange is being conducted for staff members, senior class members, members of the senior class and, uh, uh, staff members. So, uh, if you are a parent of a student in our district, a high school senior or a staff member, please participate in our thought exchange. And that, that's it for me.
Was there something, uh, we're gonna recognize Denise?
Oh, are we, oh, oh my goodness, thank you. Uh, let me get it. What did I do on that? Oh, it's sitting right in front of me, oh, thank you, yes, congratulations Denise. Our board, our board member Denise, we received word from school board U, school board university, that Denise received a certificate of excellence award. Uh, this is because she completed a hundred and fifty points toward leadership development uh, as a board member, so, uh, this is not something that is required for board members to do. Um, I think it's been a long time since I've seen one of these. Uh, I know that Denise has been very, uh, vivid about attending professional development and then coming back to the rest of the board members and sharing her findings, um, and her learning. Also, at the most recent conference, Denise represented all of our board members. And, uh, if you remember that board meeting, I think it was, um, we went through every one of the school board association's potential votes so that Denise felt very confident when she voted, she was voting, um, with the consensus of the school board. So Denise, thank you so much and congratulations.
Thank you, girl.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I think it means you can go to the next convention.
Which, which will be in the year twenty twenty five, probably, if this is.
It's in New Rochelle.
Next up, we're gonna do the budget update. From Linda.
Okay, thank you, um, I'm going to share the screen so I can, uh, bring up the presentation.
It's already up there.
It's already up, yeah.
Oh, Linda's gonna bring it up anyway.
I think I was underway and couldn't stop it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, so, uh, good evening, everyone. I do have quite a few slides that I'm showing tonight that were in previous presentations. But I, um, because we don't have, um, the final information yet from the state about the state aid, I thought it would be important to go over that again, especially if there are people listening to the budget that haven't heard this before. Um, so, like I said, this slide and several others have been presented previously. Um, there are still a lot of questions regarding state aid for two thousand twenty twenty one and how that will affect Hyde Park School District. Uh, the budget isn't complete yet, um, the actual budget numbers in this presentation were the same that I presented last time. Um, and it's because we just don't know about our state aid. Uh, we should learn about the first round of potential state aid reductions tomorrow. Um, you may remember that, um, I said previously that the governor and the, uh, New York State Budget Director both stated that school districts can expect large cuts and the budget director said that school districts shouldn't adopt a budget until after May fifteenth. Um, so there's a lot that we, uh, don't know, uh, but what we do know, um, is listed here. Um, there is no increase in two thousand twenty twenty one for foundation aid, it'll be at the same level as two thousand nineteen twenty. Um, that was, um, about two hundred thousand dollars for us and our budget has already absorbed that, uh, reduction. Um, we can expect to receive, um, up to twenty percent in, uh, state aid reductions. Um, but I'm not sure if we would find out about that throughout the year because, as you can see at the bottom of the slide, there's actually three look back periods or if we would learn in total tomorrow what we're, what we're, um, going to, uh, experience in state aid reductions. So in addition to the state aid reductions, we also have to pay a little bit more next year for the maintenance costs, which are basically a room and board for students that are residentially placed. Um, we have to absorb the state's share. Um, in previous years, the school district had to pay thirty eight point four percent of those costs and now we'll have to pay fifty six point eight percent, um, the remainder of the cost is, uh, paid for by the county. Um, also, there's a pandemic adjustment in our state aid run, which is the, um, state's enacted budget of eight hundred sixty two thousand nine hundred fifty, nine hundred forty two dollars. Uh, New York State is using money from the federal stimulus, the CARES Act, to, uh, to supplant that, so we're not losing any money, uh, but we're not getting additional money for that pandemic adjustment either. Uh, we have learned that there will be, uh, need to apply for those funds and we'll also have to account for them separately from the other funds that we receive. However, uh, that's all the information we have on that right now. Uh, we're still waiting to learn how to apply for it and how we need to account for it. Um, another thing that we know now, um, and there's more information about this with the calendar or the, the timeline at the end of the budget presentation, is that the budget vote will be held via absentee ballot um, and through the mail. Uh, ballots will be due to the district clerk by five P M on June ninth. So, um, this slide shows, um, state aid and this was also previously presented. The information on the left-hand side of the slide pertains to Hyde Park School District specifically and the information on the right-hand side is the statewide, um, school aid. Um, I am, or I wanted to show what it would look like if we experienced a twenty percent reduction in overall aid. A foundation aid, which is the first aid listed, is not restricted, meaning the school district can spend that as we need to and, and on things that we, uh, feel are important. So, we're hoping that any reduction would come only from foundation aid. A twenty percent reduction for us would be three point eight million dollars. Um, there is a possibility that the reduction could be on total aids. There was a, an article on the New York State School Boards Association website stating that overall schools could lose five and a half billion dollars in state aid and that would be a twenty percent reduction on total aid. For us, that would be six and a half million dollars. I'm listed here, or just some, um, other items that we need to consider. We will have more fund balance left over at the end of this year than we would, um, have originally if school didn't close in March, um, just in payroll, we expect to have about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars more. And right now, some of the administrators are going through their open purchase orders and closing them for items that they know that we, they won't need to purchase now that school is closed for the rest of the year. Um, so we will have the ability to appropriate more in fund balance to next year, um, should we experience some more state aid cuts. Um, we also might receive less aid next year, uh, based on the expense-based aids because of certain aids, we don't get the aid on it unless we spend the money. So we may, uh, see that we're gonna get a little less in BOSI's aid and transportation aid next year. Um, we did have a purchase cutoff, um, for the school district on March first, that's the cutoff that we have every year. So a lot of the departments and schools had already ordered the supplies that they expected to need for the rest of the school year. Uh, because we were closed though for these last three months, I expect that next year, uh, we will be spending less on supplies because we have some left over from this year. And again, the twenty percent reduction in foundation aid could be three point eight million dollars. If we were to experience a twenty percent in total state aid reduction, it would be six and a half million dollars. There is a potential to find savings in the budget through, uh, D H I C holiday. D H I C is the Duchess Educational Health Insurance Consortium and occasionally when they accumulate fund balance, they'll have a vote amongst the trustees to declare a holiday, meaning that they would only charge school districts and the, uh, members, uh, for eleven months instead of twelve months. Um, for this, for Hyde Park, the savings would be about one and a half million dollars. Typically, we don't know about the holiday when we build the budget because the, uh, vote from D H I C doesn't occur until June. However, because we might experience state aid reductions later in the year, um, this is a tool for us to help mitigate that. I just want the board and the other administrators to be aware that whenever we rely on the D H I C holiday for a budget, we kind of just push off a problem to the next year, uh, one twelfth, which, which is the one and a half million dollars of our expense is about eight percent. So the next year, if there were no D H I C holiday, we would have to add that eight percent to whatever the rate increase is and absorb that in the budget. But I think I had said last, last time, if we had a four percent increase in the D H I C rates for two thousand twenty one twenty two and there were no holiday that year, we would, we would effectively have an increase in our health insurance of twelve percent. Um, we're also looking to reduce, uh, budgets for overtime conferences and equipment if we need to. Um, and we're also considering cuts to all non-mandated items if state aid is reduced. Um, I have some new slides on that in this presentation later on, I'm actually quantifying, um, those non-mandated items. And this, uh, slide was presented last time too, so I won't get into the detail of it. Um, I just want to remind the board that we do have the ability to use some fund balance to offset any of the state aid reductions. Um, we have about twenty one point six million dollars in total fund balance, most of that is in reserves. Uh, we can't use the capital expenditure reserve, which has about three point two million dollars in it. or the repair reserve to offset any of the budget items, because the rules for using those reserves are very strict. However, the other reserves could be used to offset expenses that we're allowed to reserve those monies for. And we also have unassigned fund balance, which is listed at the top of the slide, and we can use that for any purpose, too. I didn't feel like I could show the fund balance slide without showing this one as well. This was from our long-range financial plan that our financial advisor presented to us in January. They predict, and actually, the model that they use predicts, that if the school district doesn't change anything in its budget, that by 2020-25, we would use all of the fund balance that we have. Each year, we do take measures to save in the budget to try to push that date out further. The first time, we had a long-range financial plan created by our financial advisor. The drop-off date for fund balance was 2023, so we did manage, in recent years, to push that out further. I'm concerned, or I think we just need to be aware, that if we rely more on fund balance now, we won't be able to push that off, at least not in anything through this year. And here we have our revenues budgets for 2020-21. Like I said before, this budget is the same as it was last time. I'm not sure what the state aid reductions will be yet, so I haven't changed the overall budget. Right now, we're hoping or depending on $31.4 million in state aid. If that number were to decrease, we would have to do something for the budget because our budget must be balanced. Our revenues have to match our expenditures. We only have two options. If the budget, if the state aid were to decrease, we could either increase our fund balance or decrease our expenses. Actually, there is a third option, but I don't think it's viable for us. The only other option is to increase revenues, and the only choice that the school district would have would be to increase the tax levy. But our current tax levy is within the tax cap. We're tax cap compliant. If we were to raise that, we would go over the tax cap, and we would need a supermajority or 60% approval to pass that. Here we have the expenditures. Like I said, the expense budget has to balance. It has to match the revenues. So right now, we're at the $102.4 million, a 3.79% increase, or $3.7 million. So if we were to have a reduction in state aid, we would probably increase our fund balance appropriation a little bit to increase our revenues, but also find areas in here to decrease the budget. But we are required to show the budget and its three components. Even though the budget amount is the same, this slide has changed a little bit from last time. I went through the benefits for the administrators and for the administrative staff, all of the support staff that are classified as administrative. And I allocated the, rather than using a percentage, I allocated the benefits based on what people actually have, and it actually lowered our overall admin cost a little bit. So our admin portion of the budget, including the BOSI's capital project that must be included in the admin portion, we're at 10.67%. The program costs are 75.8, and the capital is 13.53%.
Yeah, Linda, can I just jump in? Because I'm getting lots of questions asking who was on the admin? Was that principals, superintendents?
I actually have a slide later on that explains what's comprised in the administrative budget, but it's the administrators. I think there are 21 administrators that are considered in the administrative budget. There are some that are actually in other funds, and about 40, a little more than 40 support staff make up the administrative budget. So it's most of the people that work at district office and the principals and all of the school secretaries.
Thank you.
Sure. So I still am showing the slides for the additions and savings. This has been on every presentation since we first provided it in March. So I'll just go through this quickly and just point out what's new. We are expecting to add a deputy tax clerk. The stipend is $500, and with payroll taxes and pension costs, it's $612. We simply just want someone else at district office to be able to assist with collecting taxes when people come in. Right now, only one person can help the taxpayers when they come in to pay their bill, and if that person's not available, they have to wait. We would like to add some monitors. I'm sorry, I left one off from here. We actually have three part-time monitors. We're adding one at Ralph R. Smith, too. The cost is actually, including the three, and I didn't write it in this area. I'm sorry about that. So we have three monitors that we're adding, one for Netherwood, one for North Park, and one for Ralph R. Smith. We're adding the varsity girls' golf coach. We removed the purchase for lockers as part of the capital project. We had agreed to buy the lockers through the general fund. We're actually going, we were going to buy about 60% of them this year and the rest in the following year. Because of the budget constraints, it was actually because of the reduction in foundation aid, we decided to push this off until 2021-22. We know about five students that will be placed out of district that are currently in district, and the cost is $300,000. We have a nurse that we hired this year. It's not, it won't be a newly hired nurse for next year. However, the cost for that nurse was not included in the 1920 budget, so we just have to mention it here that we're adding it into the budget, and that's based on the need of a student. We outsourced some of our business office functions, some of the payroll function, to BOSI's, and because of that, we didn't have to hire a vacancy of a senior account clerk. That savings is $46,183. We have three mental health professionals that we currently are paying through a federal grant, but we have to move that to general fund for 2020-21. We're also reducing the budget based on student need by seven full-time aides. The cost savings is $280,897. Of two of those aides worked with some of those five students that will be placed out of district that I mentioned on the last slide. So also based on need is the reduction of nine and a half teaching assistance. The savings is $343,396. We're adding an elementary teacher. This teacher was actually added in 2019-20, but it was after the budget season that we realized we needed to add a teacher. This cost is actually offset through attrition of someone that's retiring. We are eliminating the overtime and the sub-cost for all clerical. Most of our clerical staff work with other people, so rather than have substitutes for clerical staff next year, we remove that, and there won't be any overtime allowed for clerical staff either. Typically, the general fund pays the food service department for student debt at the end of the year. Our budget is about $50,000, although last year, the cost of that was $26,000. The food service fund does have their own fund balance, so they'll be using their fund balance to pay off the student debt at the end of next year. We have 11 teachers retiring and one nurse, but we're replacing eight of those 11 teachers. The cost savings for that is $640,000. And then additionally, we have the .8 technology integrator and a full-time reading teacher that are being accessed, and the costs are $60,000 and $104,000 for those. We had previously mentioned that we were reducing the budget by one full-time health teacher, but that's currently on hold. Okay, so I have some more slides, and all of these slides are new. We need to show each year what the contingency budget would be if the budget were to fail and the board were to adopt a contingency budget. Because we don't have our final budget yet, please know that the contingency budget itself might change, too. So when we meet next week and I present the final budget, the contingency budget will be different as well. So if the budget were not approved by the voters, the board could adopt the contingency budget or could decide to have another vote, and they could put up the same budget or revised budget for a second vote. Right now, the second vote date is two weeks after the current vote date of June 9th. The revote date would be June 23rd. There has been talk that that date will be changed, but we haven't received information on that yet. Because the vote is through the mail, I'm not sure if it would be feasible or affordable to have a second vote, but the board would have to determine that if the first vote were to fail. So if we were to go to contingency, the tax levy could be no greater than the previous year, and it would have to be within the tax cap calculation. For Hyde Park, our tax levy would have to be reduced by $1.2 million, but we would have to reduce our expenses by an additional $783,000. And the reason for that is that the administrative component of a contingency budget can't exceed the lesser of the percent of the administrative component in the prior year's budget, excluding the capital portion of the budget or the percent of the administrative component in the last defeated budget. So basically, when you consider the admin cost with just the program cost, the percentage of the admin costs have to be the lower of whatever it was in the current year budget. So the 1920 budget, which for us, that's 11.43%, or the next year's budget, 2021, which is 12.34%. But the reason for this increase is due to that capital project for BOSI's. We're paying $1.5 million next year to BOSI's for their capital project. We're required to pay it because the voters of the county approved it. However, we also are required to show that in our admin portion of the budget, so that increases our admin percentage compared to the rest of the budget. If we didn't have the capital project from BOSI's as a required payment for next year that was removed from the budget, we would actually have seen a decrease in our percentage of admin cost to program cost. And if that were to happen, the contingency budget would only need to be adjusted by the amount of the tax levy increase or that $1.2 million. I will say that there is a lot of controversy about this, especially throughout the county, because this affects every school district in Dutchess County. We all have a payment that we're required to make to Dutchess BOSI's. Different school districts are handling this a little different. Some are choosing to classify the BOSI's capital payment as a capital expenditure rather than an admin expenditure. And I actually have a meeting with someone from New York State Comptroller's Office tomorrow to discuss our choices for that. So I hope to have some more concrete information for the board on this when I present the final contingency budget next week. So this is a slide that we show every year, and we are required to show what a contingency budget would look like. This is basically the restrictions in the contingent budget. So everything that's on the left-hand side of the screen would have to be removed if we were in contingency. So we wouldn't be allowed to have an increase in our tax levy at all, and all non-contingent items would have to be removed from the budget. So things that are included in a contingency budget or that are considered non-contingent are the community use of school buildings, unless all costs are reimbursed to the district, certain student supplies, any new equipment purchases, unless they were equipment purchases made with state aid. Some of our technology hardware purchases are aided, so we could buy equipment up to the amount of the state aid that we would receive. We couldn't have any non-essential maintenance, and any new capital projects would have to be removed from the budget. So we do have a capital outlay project in our budget that we'd have to take out. And then salary increases for the non-instructional, the non-unionized staff, for most of them, would have to be removed, too.
So sorry to interrupt, but just so as not to confuse people, the capital outlay project that would have to be removed is the bathroom at FDR in the lobby. It has nothing to do with our big Havilland North Park FDR Science Lab project. It's just the $100,000 lobby bathroom project. I just wanted to clarify that so that any listeners didn't think that we would have to put our capital project on hold.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, it's, the only thing, only new capital project we have are the cash project like Greg just mentioned. So everything on the right-hand side of the screen is considered non-mandated. We don't have to take this out of a budget. If we could create a budget that fit into the contingent budget, but if we had to find ways to decrease the budget more, this is an area where we could look to to decrease our budget. I do have another slide a little later on that actually quantifies each one of these areas. Normally, we don't show the cost, but this year, because of the, you know, the tight budget and the concerns about the state aid and the fact that we're voting in a different way, we thought it would be important to show everyone what that would cost. This is just a comparison between what a contingent budget would look like compared to the proposed budget. Right now, our budget is $102.4 million or a $3.7 million increase, which is 3.79% increase. Over the current year, the tax levy is $63.1 million. That's a $1.26 million increase or 2.05%. In the contingent budget, which I have the calculation on the next slide, the overall budget would be $100.2 million or $1.5 million increase from the current year, which is 1.57%, and the tax levy would be a 0% increase. So the tax levy would remain at $61.9 million, which it is currently in 2019-20.
So Linda, could you just reemphasize the fact that contingency budget does not mean that we have the same budget as we had last year? It just means that the tax levy increase remains is zero. So instead of 98 million, in this case, it's 100 million, that is the contingency budget.
Right. So before the tax cap was enacted, the contingency budgets were limited in what was spent. So the expenses were limited to the prior year. Now that we have a tax cap, the rules for the contingency budget have changed. The school district is limited to keeping the tax levy the same, but doesn't have to limit its expenses unless there's a change in the admin portion, like I had mentioned earlier. The admin expenses can't increase over what they were really the year before or what the percentage was. But other than that, that's the only expense limitation, as long as everything that's considered contingent adds up to the amount of the tax levy. Thank you. So this slide here shows the actual calculation for what we would be required to take out of the contingency budget, and I broke it down by program, capital, and admin. So in total, our current budget is $102.4 million. We would have to remove equipment of $1,601, and that's broken down by the type of equipment it is. The $527,400 is for program. The capital equipment is $247,000, and the admin portion is $226,000. On the student supplies, it's really hard to quantify that. Hyde Park has always assumed it would be 20% of what we buy in supplies and totals for student supplies, so that's $314,000. The capital outlay project, which for next year, our project, the project we have in the budget vote is for exterior entryways at the high school, so we wouldn't be able to have that. But in addition to that, like Greg had mentioned, we wouldn't be able to have the capital project that was voted last year because we can't spend the money next year on the FDR bathrooms. And then in the calculation that we have right now, it's showing that we would have to have additional reductions for administrative costs of $783,000. If we were to go to contingency, that's all because That's all because of the BOCs capital project. And like I said earlier, I do have a meeting with someone from the State Comptroller's Office tomorrow. So I'm hoping to get better guidance on that. So overall, our budget would be, in this scenario, would be decreased be decreased by two point two million dollars, and the budget would be a hundred point two million dollars if we were to go to contingency. So if we were faced with state aid cuts, which we probably will, that would be in addition to what we would have to lose out by of our tax levy of the one point two million dollars. This slide just shows in the normal categories that we show what the admin budget looks like. So this is what Jeff had asked about earlier. The salaries are for twenty-two administrators and managers. Managers are non-instructional administrators and forty-one support staff. We do have more than twenty-two administrators, but some of them, like food service, is paid through their own fund. The facilities administrators are paid through capital. We have one administrator that's paid through a grant. And in transportation, the administrator there is actually paid through program as our is our tech director. And everyone else is considered an administrator that's part of the administrative budget plus forty-one support staff. So the support staff are is everyone really that works at district office. It's the HR office staff, business office staff, technology. And then in addition to that, it's all of the secretaries that work for the instructional administrators and for the principals. The BOCs cost for administrative is two point four million dollars for next year. But please remember, the one point five million dollars of that is for the BOCs capital project. Things that we purchase through BOCs for administrative expenses include some software, like our accounting software. We have some curriculum development that is actually for administrators that we put in the administrative side. Any professional development that's for teachers goes in the program. Our contractual expenses, that includes things like our legal counsel, our bond counsel. We have we have our audit expenses. We have both a requirement for both an external and an internal audit. We have our fiscal advisors that we pay through contractual, our insurance, and I think I already said our bond counsel, but also our postage meter rentals that we rent through the whole district. That adds up to a little bit and other expenses that are used, other consultants that are used by administrators. And then the supplies are any supplies that are used in offices. These aren't classroom supplies. Equipment is administrative if it's used by administrators. So it's things like some of the non-instructional computer hardware that we have and some equipment that's purchased for district office or for if any were to be purchased for the principals' offices. And then the employee benefits, those are just the benefits that are associated with the twenty-two administrators and the forty-one support staff. So the total of the preliminary admin budget is ten point nine million. If we did have to reduce the admin portion of the budget, if we were in contingency, we would have to take it from one of these areas. But unfortunately, a lot of that would have to come from the salaries and the corresponding benefits.
So Linda, can we go back to that question? You said the admin costs could not increase if we're in contingency?
Right.
How do you how do you pay for the BOCs increase?
Yeah, well, the the admin costs can't be the percentage of the admin cost has to be the same or lower than either the current year or the prior year budget based on whatever's lower. So basically, it's it's limiting the increase, the rate of the increase for the admin expenses. We wouldn't be able to remove the BOCs capital project payment because that's required. So we would have to take it from other areas. However, yeah, we would have to take it either from salaries, from contractual equipment. Well, the equipment would have to come out anyway. So we would have, we could take it from other BOCs costs from salaries or from contractual. Yeah, and that's why I'm having that meeting tomorrow to see if there's any exception to that, because this was the first year, as you may remember, that the state allowed school districts to exclude the BOCs capital payments from the tax cap, from the tax levy. All right, so here we show the cost of certain non-mandated budget items. For this actually matches what's on the list on the contingency budget slide, everything that's on the right-hand side that we wouldn't have to take out unless we needed to find additional budget savings in a contingency. So the cost for the interscholastic athletics, and this includes the cost for the coaches, chaperones when there's athletic events, supplies and extra pay for the bus drivers to bring the children to athletic events. The total is five hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. For AP and elective classes, the cost is three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Co-curriculars and field trips, so that would be stipends for club advisors. The cost for field trip chaperones and the pay for bus drivers is a hundred and seventy-two thousand. The kindergarten costs are one point one million dollars. Sixth and seventh grade language, other than English, is two hundred nineteen thousand. The cost for the elementary librarians is four hundred twenty-nine thousand, and the elementary instrumental program is three hundred twenty-two thousand. So the total for everything that's listed on the non, the contingency budget slide is three point two million dollars. There are other costs that aren't mandated. They're listed here, or some of them are listed here. The modified sports is the program we have at the middle school, fifty thousand dollars. We currently provide transportation for UPK program. Last year, we actually combined the bus runs with other bus runs. So the only cost for transportation are the monitors that ride each bus. That right now, we have nine monitors. The cost is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. The cost of out-of-district conferences that are paid from the general fund, so that's what this budget is, is forty thousand. We do have a budget in one of the grants for professional development. And if we were to reduce the general fund or take out conferences, it would only be for conferences that would normally be paid from the general fund. We have a vacancy currently, the the ten-month assistant principal at the high school. With benefits, the cost is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. The cost for the high school summer school program, so that's the instruction supplies and the transportation is fifty-five thousand dollars. If we were to have a virtual high school program, we would only have to take out the transportation if we decided to keep the whole program. And I do have all of that separately. The middle school summer school program costs fifty-four thousand dollars. We have an elementary summer bridge program, and the cost is sixty-nine thousand. Right now, that's budgeted for in one of the grants. But if we were to remove that, that would free up some of the grant money for other costs, like some other payroll expenses perhaps. We have a special ed program, which would probably be mandated if there is one. However, it may be virtual. So if we were able to remove that from the budget, we would save about twenty-three thousand dollars. Just so the board is aware and anyone that's listening, eighty percent of the summer school program is covered by the state, and the school district has to pay twenty percent. So that's why we would only see a savings in the budget of twenty-three thousand, even though we spend a hundred and sixteen thousand on the transportation for the summer school program. And then we have two student resource officers, one at the high school and one at the middle school, and the cost is two hundred four thousand. So the totals from this page are seven hundred ninety thousand, combined with the totals from the other page, that would be four million dollars. There are some other budget items. I listed these separately because they're they're not anything that we've taken directly out of the budget or talked about it, but I just wanted to have it here. We do pay and we're contractually obligated to pay vacation payout for some certain residencies, the retirees and other employees. Some employees have in their contract that they can buy back, or they're really selling back vacation days. We have the ability to pay for that through one of our reserves. One of our reserves is called the Employee Benefit Liability Reserve. And the plan is next year to use that reserve to pay these amounts. So in the budget, we had a hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars for this. That's going to stay in the budget. But on the final budget, there'll be an additional appropriation of fund balance by that amount, and it's to cover those expenses. We currently have vacancies and planned retirements for June thirtieth that we had committed to rehiring, to replacing. However, if we're faced with really large cuts, we could look at those areas again to see if there's any positions that we could go unfilled in order to avoid laying off other people. That cost in total for all of them is one point two million. There's the merit-based raises for non-union staff is fifty-four thousand. And then we looked at some other program savings that we could potentially find from instructional services of three million dollars, three million forty-eight. Okay, so the dates have changed too. Now that we know the budget vote date, we updated this slide. Our next budget presentation is on Tuesday, May nineteenth. And the reason we're having that meeting is that tomorrow we should find out if there will be any state aid reductions based on the April lookback period. If there are, we'll change this budget and present that on Tuesday at five thirty. The board must adopt the budget by May twenty-first, and so that is just two days later. We didn't want to have this meeting tonight and then come back to you next week the first time with a budget on the same night that you need to adopt it. That's why there are two meetings. We'll review the budget on the nineteenth. We'll review it again on the twenty-first, but that's when the board must adopt the budget. The next week on the twenty-eighth, that's a Thursday, at six thirty, there'll be the budget hearing and the presentation of the adopted budget. June ninth is the school budget vote date. As I said earlier, this will be done through the mail and with absentee ballots. All of the absentee ballots that will be returned must be returned. The district clerk must have them by June ninth at five P M. We'll be mailing out the absentee ballots after the board adopts the budget, and the there'll be postage-paid return envelopes for anyone to return them. So I don't have anything else at this time. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is in the CARES Act. Are we expecting in the CARES Act money that in front of your budget? You're saying a twenty percent reduction, that the state's going to cut to twenty percent of the federal aid?
The reason I had that on this slide, I'm assuming, sorry, I returned this slide where I showed the federal CARES restoration and
Yes.
Not yet. So when we had first heard about the state aid cut, I mean, by we, I mean, like, the administrators and also my colleagues in other districts, we all assumed that it could be twenty percent of foundation aid, because that's the aid that's unrestricted. For Hyde Park, it's nineteen million dollars, and twenty percent would be three point eight million. However, there was a, an article, like I said, on this New York State School Boards Association website. They didn't, they mentioned the twenty percent aid reduction. They didn't say that it would only be foundation aid or on all aid, but they said it would be five point five billion dollars. And five point five billion dollars is total state aid reduction. So when I did the calculation to show what a twenty percent total reduction would be for us, I just changed twenty percent everywhere. But I don't think if we were to receive a twenty percent reduction, it would probably, it would be allocated elsewhere. The eight hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars is what New York State is receiving in federal CARES restoration money that they said they would be using to give to the school district to make up for other money that they removed from the they called it the pandemic adjustment when they took it out of our budget, and they're giving it back to us as federal CARES restoration. If we were, I don't think it would be reduced there.
Okay.
Yeah, that was very
Kind of unusual.
Thank you. You're very observant.
So Linda, could we put a face on the twenty percent? Three point eight million, if you've figured a hundred and fifty thousand for a teacher for average salary and benefits, that's twenty-five teachers.
Yeah.
We're talking something is a big thing, and if it's six, it's over forty people, and not that we're not that we're going to get rid of that many teachers. But I'm just saying, to put a face on that amount of money is, it's a big deal. It's a really big deal.
I had done the calculation based, I I calculated based on what our average teacher makes and what the average health insurance plan is. And I looked at the six and a half million dollars. So if, like, I figured the worst-case scenario, if we were to lose six and a half million dollars, that equates to fifty-six teachers. But you are right, you know, the cuts wouldn't just be in teaching, and we do have some fund balance too that we would use. We wouldn't make all cuts, but yeah.
I just wanted to point out that it it it's just a number when you see it on a chart. But when you think of it in terms of staff, program, and all the things, it's a major, major blow for the to the school district.
Yes, it's exactly, it's devastating.
Yeah, a cut a cut like that would mean that we would offer an educational program that is unrecognizable. It would mean we would have an educational program that has not existed for over a hundred years. So that's just another picture. When you picture what schooling is and what it offers children, yes, we we've grown into what it offers our our children and our families, but it would it would look devastatingly different. A concern that I have, just me personally, I'm speaking, I am the superintendent, but I am speaking personally, a fear that I have. I know that the economy is tight and and every household has been affected and is hurting. However, if a, if the educational program looks so drastically different and there are fewer opportunities for families to have children engaged in in a lot of other things that either they pay for or the community has provided, maybe without a cost. If if the schools can't offer anything, our the children of our community will really have a life that is very different than anyone has experienced in in multiple decades. So it's it's an observation, not trying to do gloom and doom, but these numbers are significant, and they're scary.
And this is something the community needs to understand. You know, it's, we're going into a voting process that is very different than we've been in in a long time or ever been in. And it's not a casual process. You know, the potential is we're going to have many more people casting votes, but they all need to understand the impact of to the education system as we know it.
So with that too, there are three lookback periods for state aid cuts. We're learning tomorrow about any state aid cuts from the state's lookback period of April two thousand twenty. Then we're in the second lookback period now, measurement period, excuse me, that ends on June thirtieth. I would hope that we would find out by July fifteenth, or our budget will have already been in place by then. And if we have to make further cuts, we'll have to decide how to handle that. And then the next measurement period is longer. It goes from July first through December thirty-first. And I expect we would hear halfway through our school year if there would be additional state aid reductions from that.
So Linda, we're going to come up with
So Linda, we're gonna come up with a very tight window to have, for you to have a budget presented to us by May nineteenth. I know today we didn't get the budget on the board docs until after, after noon. Um, when do you think we're gonna see that be put onto the board doc?
Yeah, um, so depending on when I find out tomorrow, um, what the state aid will be, I'll, I'll be working on the budget as soon as I, as soon as I get that and then sharing it with Greer and Aviva. Um, the reason why the budgets have been put on later than they normally would is by the time, you know, each week we're, we're working on the budget again. So now we pretty much have the costs for everything that we may need to reduce if we have to. So I, I feel it would be fairly uh quickly to get it turned around. Um, I'll just have to confer with the superintendent and the deputy superintendent on what items we need to um, you know, consider for removal if we have large reductions. So.
I just, I'm wondering.
Oh, excuse me.
I'm just wondering, we have to give an opening for public comment. And I'm just trying to figure out how the public can be able to see that in time before, or how we're gonna handle public comment.
I'm not sure if um, and I can't see the screen, so I can't see people, I'm sorry. But I'm not sure if um, if the superintendent or the uh deputy superintendent wanna say that, you know, chime in. But I could have the, I could have the changes um in the budget uh on Monday.
Okay, I think we'll have to talk in um for a discussion about uh public participation and this, when the latest we can get input in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions?
I just wanted to say excellent job for Linda. You know, again, in very uncertain times, you gave us a lot of the information that we know. And just echo again what Perry said and Dr. Reichek. It is so important for people this year more than ever, you know, to look at ballot that comes in the mail and make sure they're voting so we're not shortchanging, changing our children.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Sure, thank you.
I would like to apologize to all listeners. We did hear there was a YouTube problem and I hear some of you missed the beginning of the meeting. Um, so YouTube is up and running from what I'm seeing and hearing. So just to offer apologies that it wasn't up, but it was out of our control. And we'll move on to um virtual public participation. Um, we have two letters to the board. Uh, Denise, would you like to read them?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes, I will read them. Okay. The first one is, is shortened to the point that, that Jeff, that you just made. It comes from Gretchen Meyer Dietrich. Um, as an employee who listens and attends the Board of Ed met, meeting, and this hardens that the budget is not available for viewing prior to virtual meeting. Since everything is virtual now, it can be posted. Is there any reason why the budget is not able to be viewed by the public and district's employees prior to a Board of Ed meeting? Since we are waiting for New York State about funding and aid, it is only fair to the general public that these items are posted in a timely fashion so individuals can view them before the board meetings are held. The public also has a right to know what they are voting on for, or what they are voting for come June when the budget does go to vote. Any insights to these concerns will be greatly appreciated. The second um email came in from Suzanne McGee on behalf of some of the teachers. Says, dear members of the board, we are reading specialists and teachers at Havlin Middle School. We are reading specialists and teachers at Havlin Middle School, writing to express a concern about the proposed reduction of one full-time reading teacher. At the April thirtieth Board of Ed meeting, sixth grade team teachers inquired in a letter about the data surrounding this cut. In our opinion, we cannot wait until the fall for data to determine the needs of our students. Havlin currently has a targeted support and improvement school status and we need to hit the ground running in the fall. Traditionally, at HMS, we use the fifth grade MAPS data and F and P benchmarks to develop reading groups in the spring and summer to begin teaching A I S classes on day one. We would also like to speak to the importance of reading instruction being taught by certified reading specialists in A I S classes. Our students face challenges that affect their ability to catch up to their peers. Health issues like decreased oxygen during birth and traumatic brain injury that can cause learning disabilities, mental health problems such as depression and anxiety, outside demands such as caring for siblings, family members who are coping with substance abuse and addiction, poverty and homelessness. Reading teachers personally engage students to believe in themselves and persevere in spite of their challenges. They utilize Santes and Pennell leveled literacy intervention at HMS, which is designed to provide differentiated instructional, instruction to small groups and address a wide range of reading levels within one class. Therefore, class sizes are intentionally smaller than others. It is also important to consider the thousands of dollars that the, that the district has invested in providing professional development in the L L I system in the teacher we are losing. Finally, according to research conducted by N W A A, the creator of the MAPS assessment we use in Hyde Park, preliminary COVID slide estimates suggest students will return in fall twenty twenty with roughly seventy percent of the learning gains in reading related to a typical school year. We respectfully ask the board to reflect on long-term in, impact, on the long-term impact this cut to our A I S staff will have on our students. Reading skills are paramount, paramount to achieve our district's professional, forgive me. Reading skills are paramount to achieve our district's profile of a graduate, to be critical thinkers who anticipate, identify and evaluate issues, use multiple resources to solve problems. In order to continue making progress as a T S I school, we must continue to invest in quality reading instruction delivered by reading specialists. Sincerely, reading specialist Suzanne McGee, Kathleen Tichner, Andrea Salotus and Alexis Barth, supported by teachers Michael Smith, Kevin Caliore, Doreen Boom Pitcher, Cindy Ader, Joanna Giacino, Michelle Osinski and Angela Bittencourt. That, that's what we received. Does anybody have any comments?
Uh, I'll comment on the first one. Uh, the budget presentations are on the district website. They're also available at the uh board docs public area. So um, are they available somewhere else? I'm not sure, but electronically they are available prior to the board meeting.
Yeah, but um, today it didn't show up in the board docs for the meeting until afternoon.
Well, that's true.
In the meeting.
And yeah. This is also a, a uh unusual times where things are uh fluid and things change. And I am sure that Linda got that out as quickly as she could.
So, so this is Linda. Yeah, um, today I did finish the budget today. Um, I think the last few weeks I'd been finishing it, the presentation the day before. Um, it was later this week. Uh, the, just to clarify, the uh presentations on the website get posted the day after the board meeting. So before the board meeting, the um, the only place for the public, I think, to find them is in board docs.
Yes, but you can see the progression on the website.
Yes, yes, you can.
But if we want public comment, we shut public comment down by three o'clock the day before to put it in. So we have them printed out for us to read. So we don't give the public time to make comment on it if, if it comes in late. That's what I'm talking about is that, for next week, we have to give time for the public to be able to respond to it. We have a very short window for, for Linda to put this together and present it. So we may have to look at loosening up and way we can get public input on that budget.
Okay, well, I think the only way that can happen is if we have um, the ability for people to call in.
Yeah, we'll talk about that in, in the board discussion, so yeah. And for the reading, I do understand that reading teachers are a necessity. And really, right now, after a spring of people doing virtually and reading assistance must be really struggling trying to get students in there. But I don't know what we're going to do at all yet, so. So I understand that they're important. I don't know what we can say about it.
Um, this is Aviva. I, I commented last time on this, but I, I need to say again that um, we don't wanna make any of these cuts to the programs for students. Um, we don't wanna um lay off anyone in this district. Um, and as you can see from the budget presentation, we're in a budget crisis right now. It's very uncertain what the cuts are gonna be, but I'm sure you can read in the news. Other districts are anticipating and making huge layoffs right now. Um, so um, you know, again, I, I'm concerned like everyone else about the losses that students are having, um, you know, while they're home and, and receiving, you know, um, the best that we can do um, online, but it is not the same as being in school all day. So, you know, I, I share that concern and, and moving forward. You know, again, we're gonna do the best that we can um, to provide interventions with the staff that we have um, when students return and, and we complete those assessments.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to board discussion. Um, sorry, I got disconnected, reconnecting. So we wanna talk about and discussions is on what is a qualified voter. And under our policy twenty one, twenty point two, qualified votes must either be registered with the school district board of registration or be a current voter list maintained by the local board of elections. So qualified voter based on that is a registered voter.
Yeah, and Jeff, if I, if I may, uh, like everything else, um, things are moving incredibly quickly. So at our last board meeting, we were talking about uh eligible voters. We were using the definition of, of, of who's eligible to vote. Anybody who's eighteen, you know, a U S citizen, et cetera. Um, and since the last meeting, we've learned, uh, uh, we've had some new verification and that there's a difference between um, uh, how districts qualify voters. There is a poll registration or a personal registration. Poll registration, maybe the voter will be able to walk in to the voting site and register at the polls. The other uh type of uh qualified voter is a, is what they call a personal registration. And by policy, uh, the policy attached here, we have always been a personal registration. In other words, our qualified voters are those who walk in the door already, already registered to vote. Um, so we also got a legal opinion on that. Uh, that supports that by um definition in ed law and uh supported by our policy, if you are a personal registration site, your qualified voters are those who are already in the poll books. With that said, there is still time to register to vote uh at the county level. Um, if it's not already on the website, we'll ask the district clerk to put up the link uh on our website, how to register to vote. But our interpretation right now is that when we send out the ballots, they will go to our qualified voters. By policy, our qualified voters are those who are registered to vote.
Uh, Greer, that's not actually true. Uh, if you read the section four, uh, such a person who can vote is qualified to register or is registered to vote according to section five, one oh six of the election law. So I would say that uh anybody who is qualified to vote under our policy should get a ballot. I think it's insanely hard to do, but uh if you wanna be a stickler, that's what it says.
Uh, what are you looking at, Doug?
I'm looking at our policy. In the first paragraph, in the first paragraph, da, da, da. Uh, in all matters placed on a ballot, if such a person is, one, two, three, four, the fourth one says qualified to register. It doesn't say registered. It says qualified to register or is registered.
So with that saying that Doug, it has, they have to register.
No, it says, it says you will send.
And both, and both previously done, when they come and they're not in the books. What do we do? We have to put them together to register.
I know that, but this is not, this is not normal. This says, the, the governor said on a decorative order that qualified voters can, that if they're qualified to register, they can vote. That's what he said.
And they can register, correct?
No, they don't have to register. If they're qualified.
They're quali, how do you know if they're qualified to register if they haven't registered?
According to our lawyers, they said, who said that they have to verify by uh affidavit. Who knows how to do that? Uh, in fact, I, I highlighted that in other one. That all they have to do is verify that they were qualified.
And how do they get an affidavit?
They have to come in with an affidavit.
I mean, that's something we have to discuss. I'm, I'm just telling you what the lawyer said.
Well, yeah, but the lawyer on the footnote talks about that the eligible voter is not defined under ed law like the qualified voter is. We interpret eligible voter to mean qualified voter. We look on page three on the footnote. And, and, and in our policy, it references the ed law.
Okay, number four, must school districts still mail out the budget notice to all parties, the same thing, qualified voters?
Right, but to become qualified, a qualified voter must, must either be registered with the school district's board of registration or be a current voter list me, on, or on a current voter list maintained by the local board of elections, period. So that's, that's a qualified voter. You can become a qualified voter if, in this way, but you have to go through the process of becoming a qualified voter. I agree, everybody can be a qualified voter. I mean, you know, anybody that, that lives in the district or that meets these qualifications can become a qualified voter. But you're not a qualified voter simply because you live in the district.
So what do we do before the vote? Like Jay, if Jay, if people walk in, two, two questions I have. If somebody walks into the vote and they're not registered, but they, you know, but they wanna vote, what do we do? And my second question is, if we register them, well, depending on the answer, the first one, if they register and we allow them to vote at that time. and we allow them to vote at that time, how are we going to do that before June sixth? So Jay, can you answer those two questions?
I'm in here Denise. We are not poll registration site. By policy, we are a personal registration site, which means that the people who walk in to vote, the people who vote in our school budget have to be registered previously. We get our, our poll book have all of the registered voters and those are the people that get about to vote at, at our voting site. They cannot register on site. There is still time for people to register to vote with the county. There is no, and you know, we can post that they could do it online, but there isn't. And I don't know if the county offices are open for that, but there is no in-person registration at the school district at this time, so.
So the answer to the first question, right, I get, okay, so is no, we don't do that. But if they want to become an eligible voter for us.
Qualified, qualified voter.
Qualified, thank you, thank you Perry. A qualified voter, they, they have up until when to do that?
I would like, I would like a second opinion from the board. I, the NISBA people made a big deal about qualified voters as opposed to registered voters. And qualified voters included registered voters, but could be anybody who was qualified for this particular election.
Can I jump in?
I don't know, I don't know how you do that, but I think, I think the governor said that's what he wanted.
If you read further down, it's how will school district ascertain the contact information for all qualified voters? And school districts should maintain lists of current registered voters and those who currently receive absentee ballots with their contact information. All of whom should be mailed an absentee ballot. So it looks like this, all they're talking about is registered voters and absentee ballot voters.
Hey. Yeah, in that statement, it said the executive order did not specifically suspend or modify the laws addressing personal registration.
All right, also from the lawyer, it says, in the website informing residents who are not currently registered of their right to receive a ballot, provided that they supply an affidavit, affidavit declaring that they satisfy the qualification criteria should get a ballot.
Okay, what number, I'm sorry, what number was that, Doug?
It's seven, on my page four, number eight.
Okay. All right, it says, our school districts should try to maintain a list of voters who are.
I mean, this is insane. It's absolutely insane. The whole, this whole thing is a recipe for failure.
Yeah.
And it's not right. And whoever advised the governor to enact this policy for this vote should lose a job. This, this is an unworkable solution.
Well, we need to make a decision tonight because we need to send information out in consultation with my colleagues. We were, where, where we were landed was we were advised that if you are a personal registration site and you had a policy to support it, you were protected by policy and by law that sending out the ballots to qualified voters. By our definition, if somebody is registered, we would be fine. So I don't know that, I don't know that we're going to get any more clarity, but we need to finalize this tonight and.
Well, what if somebody, what if somebody challenges it? That I didn't get, I didn't get the chance to vote.
There are going to be challenges every which way but Sunday, regardless of what our district does or another district does. We don't have any answers if people challenge this. I think exposure for challenge is greater by, by not being able to send out to people who actually have registered. I, I could be wrong, but we don't have a way of checking affidavits. This is, there's no in-person. We don't have a mechanism to say, send in your affidavit, affidavit and, and we would check that. So, you know, I, I agree Doug, it's an absolute mess and a nightmare. But we have to make a decision tonight that we're either going to use our poll books as we have done for decades and send out our ballots to the people in our poll book as provided by NTS. But we, we can't, we can't leave this meeting without a decision.
Do we have any input from the board of elections of Dutchess County about people who want to register to vote at this late date? Will they, are they working with us to get us a wake, you know, literally up until the minute?
I don't know if it's up until the minute, Jay, do you know? But people can still register to vote now. Jay, do you have any information on that?
In general, for any other election, the board of elections tells us if they get the application within seven days before the vote, they will guarantee that it's entered. In the event, we got something from some, if someone came in and said they sent it in, but they're not in our books, we, the board of elections stays open during our vote so that we can call to see if they have that application. And if they do, then we're good to go for the vote. That happens every year. If people aren't registered and they show up to vote, generally we ask them to fill out a registration so they can mail it in so they can vote at the next election.
So basically people have until June first or second to register with the county to vote.
Right, and, and I think, I think that that's a good plan, right? Because if we try to alter what, what the rules are in place now, just because it's being done via, via, you know, mail, doesn't make sense, right? It really just doesn't make sense that we're going to alter the law that you have to be a registered voter, right? You should be a registered voter. We provide a mechanism for them to become a registered voter. And, and, and that's it. I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's pretty simple. I don't know why we're, we're over complicating it. It's not like we're taking away the ability for them to become a registered voter. That exists. And it's no different than if it was an in-person vote where if they showed up to, you know, have a lot to vote and we look and they're not in the book, we say, sorry, you can't vote, right? That's, that's no different than, why should it be any different today?
Because the governor changed the rules. He changed, he changed the rules.
Big disagreement on that, Doug.
I don't, I don't know if that's true, Doug. I, I don't, I don't know if that's true.
Well, NISBA certainly thinks it is.
Well, I don't know that they're, they're not the deciding factor either, though.
I, I know, but I'm telling you.
I, I've had more conversations about this in, in the last week with, with multiple different school districts and everybody's got their own interpretation on it. It's, I was talking with the attorneys from the New York State facility, school facility today and they admitted that they're, you know, they've got opinions going both directions on it. They're attempting to reach out to the governor's office to try to get some clarity on it. But, you know, there's, there's no one, there's no one to, to give any greater clarity at this point.
And so since there is a difference of opinions, wouldn't it be safer for us just to say, keep it as it is today? It's no different than, than, than if this wasn't a virtual vote in a, in an email or whatever vote. Just keep it the same and be safe.
I'm fine with keeping it the same, but I don't think it's safe. But if you want to do it with just registered voters, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I think we do have to look at it for the point of view that they can register up until seven days before. So our both, our absentee ballots are going to go out before that. So if someone does register and say they registered, then they'll need to contact probably on the district page and request an absentee ballot and say, I registered.
Right.
They'll have to do it next week. They'll have to do it next week because you can't, you can't mail things out and get it, have them get it and have them send it back. That's going to take probably ten days, possibly. It could take less.
Okay, so they have to do it next week. I.
We should tell them that.
But, but even, but even in.
By sending out a postcard and I've asked Jay to put on the bottom what other districts are doing on how to register to vote with the county. So we are prepared and we have the draft of the postcard that will be sent to every single person in the community, not registered voters, everybody. By law, we have to send a notification to the entire community. That postcard will go to thirty thousand people. It will have the information on how to register to vote and they'll have it by next.
Right, and, and to me, it's, I, I don't think you could register to vote right up until the actual vote. I, I really, like for an in-person vote, isn't there a deadline, like, you know, before the actual vote? There, there is, you know, I can't walk in there and say, I want to register to vote and then vote. There, there's a deadline. So this is no different than that.
Right, and I'm just saying the postal service has come out. I watched a webinar where a postal guy said, look, it'll take two to five days to get it out, two to five days to get it back, but really you should count on five days either way. That's ten days.
But, but, but that's the confines we have to work in, right? We can't, we can't change that, right? We can't control what we can't control, so this is, this is what we're doing. We're sending out a, a note, and I don't even know if we do that in normal times to say, hey, go, go register to vote. But we're doing an extra here saying, hey, go off and register to vote. Here's the mechanism to do that. You better hurry up if you're interested. Go off and vote and do that, right? We'll put that same message on our website. Go off and vote if you're interested. Give them the mechanism and then we go to registered voters and say, here's the budget vote.
Right, you know, it's a little like do no harm. We've done no harm. It is a democratic process for, ever since we voted. And so that's a personal choice people make whether or not they register to vote. And, and if, if, if this motivates more people to register to vote, to be part of the democratic process, fine. But the democratic process is that you register to vote. That's the only mechanism of checking the eligibility of voters. And that's a well-oiled machine and it, it's a right that everyone has had. We are not taking away people's rights.
I, I, I agree one thousand percent with that statement, right? It's, it's the process in place. And if we change it to open it up to everyone based on some interpretation that we get from the governor's office, we're opening ourselves up to a lot of legal fallout after that. Whether the budget passes or whether the budget fails, there's going to be questions forever about whether or not there were legal voters or not legal voters. This way we know there are legal voters, registered voters. We know it's, it's, it's the right then.
I think we should stand by our policy. Our policy says, it clearly lays out, you know, who are the people that are entitled to vote in our school district? Does, you know, people can still register, you know, they have to do it quickly. I, I agree if they want to do it, but this isn't news, right? I mean, it's not like we're just telling them about this vote, vote today. You know, this has been going on. If people want to vote, you know, they've, they've had time to register to vote. They still have time to register to vote. I'd say we stand by our policy that we have in place that is adopted by the board and we, we use it to guide us.
I, I don't want to keep drumming the same thing, but the policy says a person can, is entitled to vote if he is qualified to vote. But if he's qualified to register or is registered. Qualified to register or is registered according to section five, one oh six of the election law. Just saying what the policy said.
Right, I, I think Doug, if you look at the policy, and again, this is why, you know, when we spend all this time in policy, maybe we shouldn't, maybe, maybe, you know, some of these words are used twice. But it says, the first statement clearly defines a qualified voter. Then the second sentence says, a person shall be entitled, entitled and or eligible if they meet these qualifications. So, you know, they're entitled if they are qualified to register. So we're using the term twice and very loosely, but the first sentence clearly defines what a qualified vote must be either registered with the school district's board of registration or be on the current voter list maintained. So I think this is a classic case of a policy where we're using the word qualified in two different ways, but the, the definition is clear. And then the second part that the ellipses refers to is a person shall be entitled or eligible. So I don't know, we can play semantics all night, but we, we do have to make a decision.
Can I just say that on number four, it does say in accordance, it should be accordance, in accordance with section five dash one oh six of education law. I think the number four is specifically regarding that. And five dash oh six, one oh six has to do with being a felon and whether you're a felon who's been pardoned or served time. And I believe that that piece is what they're trying, what it is alluding to. I only know that because I looked up the law.
Thank you, because I was just trying to look up the law.
So we haven't heard from Ed or Carl.
I'm in, in favor of, of moving forward with our, our original plan. I don't see how we could possibly verify things, but I just got an email from Gully Stanford, our newly elected representative to the BOCs about an affidavit that's available from the county. But if we have to make a decision tonight, I think we need to move forward with what we had planned on doing.
I mean, registered voters.
Yes.
Okay. Ed?
And I would jump in and agree. I think that's the only choice we really had. Like Greer said, we've always been a personal registered type polling place. The governor has said we have to social distance. There's no way for us to have people in the school to register. So as long as we're putting it out there on social media, like Mike said, to remind people how to register, that's the best we can do.
And we're sending the postcard out. Right?
Well, and, and honestly, that's more than we do in normal times, right? I mean, I don't normally do that, so we're going above and beyond to tell people, hey, register and we're doing a, an absentee ballot. So I think we're actually doing more than what we do in a regular year.
Okay, I think we're six to one on this.
One thing, I just, there is a voter registration form on the Dutchess County website that you can fill out and mail in.
And there's a link to the Dutchess County Board of Elections on our website also.
Yep.
So I think we're, we're going to go forward with a registered voter.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So also in for discussion, I think we have to talk about public participation for next week since it's been rushed so quickly and is there, or can we hear from Rick? Or is there some way we can get the people to talk to the board? Or do we put public comment in that you can send a, say, like a. Or do we put public comment in that you can send a, the link on the website up until just before the board meeting? Bring your question to the board.
Well, the lawyer said you couldn't do that.
Couldn't do what?
You couldn't send in the questions. They had to be, they had to be during the meeting. Uh, I'll find it, hang on.
I think that may be about the budget hearing, which was the week after.
Right, I'm sorry, yes, you're correct, but that's still a problem. It is the budget hearing, it's the same, it, it. So that'll still have to be resolved in some way.
So any tech people that can help to help you resolve this? I'm not a tech person.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, Rick, Rick could think about it, but, but even if we opened up something, right? Like a Slack channel or even, I don't know, like I, I think a Slack channel would probably be best and this way we can control it and um, you know, something like that where people could log on to a Slack channel and, and, and add their comments uh real time.
Yeah, well, not a lot of people know how to use Slack. Very well, we got that down.
Well, not a lot of people knew how to use any of the technologies that we're doing today, but you know, you gotta, you gotta learn, learn by trial and error.
Okay, so does somebody want to get a group together to talk about this tomorrow with Rick and Greer? And see what we can do?
For what Jeff?
To try to figure out how we can get increased public participation into the meeting and make it timely.
I'd be happy to get together. I'm free, but I'm, I'm not that tech savvy.
Yeah, one, one of the problems Jeff is that the YouTube is, is a bit delayed. It's about 45 seconds to a minute delayed, so we would have to account for that, but Rick will figure it out. Yeah, I have confidence.
Poor Rick, it's all on you.
And, and this is Ed, I'll ask around on my end a little bit and I'll talk to Rick.
Okay, sounds good. I'll be working for the next three days, so I'm definitely have time. Uh, on to board subcommittee reports. Um, the DLT met virtually with 30 some of us on here?
Yeah.
And we're looking forward to going ahead to the future and looking for things early, if you're early, there's another DLT meeting in two weeks. As we look to what it takes to reopen. Does anyone else have comments about the DLT?
Uh, uh, or the DLT?
Yep. Okay, is there any other subcommittee report?
Uh, this is Carl, I communicated with Heather Dennis of the Special Ed Committee and uh, she said they're still, they're plugging along and, and getting things done. And again, I have to stress about, you know, Heather's group and, and just our staff in general. What a, what a tremendous job they're doing in these difficult times. Thank you all.
Any other committee report?
Uh, this is Perry, I can report that the Dutchess County School Board Association had their monthly meeting. Uh, I guess it was last Thursday. Uh, and there was a report given by the Red Hook Central School District in, uh, about their gardening program and sustainability and their student involvement. And uh, they have a, a composting program going throughout their elementary school where they're composting all appropriate materials coming out of the building. Good, good presentation, um, good program. It's actually nice to think about something other than COVID for a little while.
Yeah, I bet it was. Any other reports? So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved. Second, Mike.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Mike. Um, any discussion? Um, I thought it was something on personnel. Okay, um, no, you're hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Uh, is there any abstentions? Hearing none, is there any no votes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
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 So we have a unanimous consent for the, for the consent agenda. Uh, on to new business, and I have a motion for 10.1, special education placement.
So moved.
Second, Mike.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Mike. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Is there any abstentions? Hearing none, is there any no votes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
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 So we have a unanimous vote for special education placement. And I have a motion for 10.2, first consideration and adoption of policy code of conduct.
So moved.
Second, and Perry.
Moved by Doug, seconded by Perry. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Is there any abstentions? Hearing none, is there any no votes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a unanimous consent for the first consideration and adoption of policy code of conduct. And I have a motion for 10.3, first consideration of policies requiring annual, annual review.
So moved Doug.
Second, Mike.
Moved by Doug, seconded by Mike. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Is there any abstentions? Hearing none, is there any no votes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
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 We have a unanimous consent of first consideration of policies requiring annual review. And a motion for 10.4, designation appointment dehect alternate.
So moved. Carl.
Second, Perry.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Perry. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Is there any abstentions? Hearing none, is there any no votes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
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 So we have a unanimous consent for 10.4, designation appointment of dehect alternate. And I have a motion for 10.5, paid leave.
So moved Doug.
Second, Perry.
Moved by Doug, seconded by Perry. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Is there any abstentions? Hearing none, is there any no votes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
We have a unanimous consent of 10.5, paid leave. There is no other matters deemed necessary by the board. There is no um need for a second executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved Perry.
Second, Mike.
Moved by Perry, seconded by Mike. We'll proceed to vote. Is there any abstentions? Hearing none, is there any no votes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
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 So meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for participating and those that were listening.